Okay. Hi, everyone. Good evening. We have a wonderful turnout this evening at Southwood Middle School. It's good to see everyone. My name is Mark Nagy. I'm a community relations officer for Region 1 of Tennessee's Department of Transportation. We're here tonight at Southwood Middle School to gather public input on the proposed James White Parkway extension. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss the findings of the approved draft environmental impact statement and to provide the public an opportunity for input on the project prior to selection of a preferred alternative and/or the completion of the final environmental document.
Summary of the project impacts with no build alternative. The no build will not meet the purpose and need. The future traffic demands projected for Chapman Highway in South Knoxville, the South Knoxville region area to the south continue to grow. Traffic volumes and demand are going to continue to increase. As traffic increases, existing roadway capacity and safety issues will continue to worsen. A declining traffic circuit will discourage economic growth in the area and region, and it'll continue to adversely impact existing businesses within the immediate project area. Baseline land use and ecological conditions in the immediate project would be preserved under the no build alternative, however. The no build alternative does not meet the purpose and need of the project. For the build alternatives, as a summary, and this would basically apply to any of the three we're looking at tonight, there would be, the adverse impacts would be the displacements of residents and businesses. There'd be a long-term increase in noise levels in the immediate project vicinity. There'd be temporary construction impacts, dust, siltation, temporary erosion, construction noise, those sorts of things. The surface waters would be impacted. We would need to address certain karst features, including sinkholes, caves. The conversion of undeveloped areas to highway right-of-way would result in the loss of walleye habitat. And the impacts to the William Hasting natural area and local trail system will occur. If we look at the beneficial impacts, we would improve the traffic capacity and the system linkage. We would increase the safety. We would improve the circulation among the cities and communities in the project area. We'd improve the regional accessibility in the project area. We'd reduce travel times, which would result in long-term air quality beneficial impacts. It'd be long-term energy savings, and that would be improved access to recreational areas and trails in the area. And if the James White Parkway is built, we would have the opportunity to construct the James White Parkway Greenway.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the T-Dot for being here, for hosting this meeting. I know this is part of your process, and I think I want to thank all the people that showed up. What a great turnout. Recently, Vice Mayor Pavlos and I and my staff met with Commissioner Schor and his staff, and the folks who are here who were at that meeting. Very good meeting where we talked about this process and what steps you all have to take in order to follow up with this process that you started with the EIS. And we talked about Vice Mayor Pavlos and my position that we have already gone on record as stating that we are opposed to this project going forward. And I appreciate the reaching out from Commissioner Schor, former mayor himself. He understands us, he understands our role, he understands communities, and now he understands T-Dot. You know, and I also have a particular interest, not only as mayor, but I've lived in South Knoxville for 11 years now. And I know I'm just, you know, half a mile maybe from where the current Parkway ends. So I know the area. And, you know, it used to be called "The Bridge to Nowhere," which we know is "The Bridge to South Knoxville," which is very, very special in itself. But since this process started, even since you all went after the EIS, the regional goals, you mentioned that you all like to focus on the regional goals and objectives, and the local goals and objectives. And our goals and objectives in South Knoxville have changed since this process started. We are now, we are not "The Bridge to Nowhere" anymore. We are now "The Bridge to an Urban Recreation Destination." And as a city, we are investing, as a community, we have a lot of private sector investment, we have a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. We're going to hear from folks who have made those investments personally. We have our nonprofit organizations, our I Am's Nature Center, we have many. We have foundations like the Aslan Foundation. We have many entities and individuals that are actively investing and reinvesting in South Knoxville to make it an urban recreation destination. And you all know about that, you've identified many of those things that we're doing. So I support the no build alternative, but that's not enough. I know that you all have certain alternatives you've identified. So I say no build, but then we have to sit down and talk about how we make improvements to Chapman Highway, to the other roadways. And also, we have to look beyond what we just expect based on current patterns. We have an obligation, I have an obligation as a mayor, my council, our community, has an obligation to plan how we want the future to be and not to say that what the projections are are going to happen. We have to address the issues that you have identified. If we don't do anything, the Chapman Highway traffic problems, the issues related to crashes and such, we have to address that. And so as a community, I pledge to work with the community, to work with councils, to work with our regional partners such as Sevier County and areas where people are trying to come from and go through Knoxville, and with T-Dot to figure out what are those changes that we need to make? How do we need to plan our future differently so that this alternative is not needed?
Nick Pavlos in the microphone.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Again, I'm Nick Pavlos, I'm Vice Mayor and Councilman for South Knoxville with all this beautiful area that we got. I want to thank you everybody. This Friday, Mayor Harrow said that coming out on kind of a dreary night that we can turn out a crowd in South Knoxville, that's for sure. And I know that this is a, you know, politically charged issue, and I could probably debate both sides of it, but let me say I agree with the mayor. The no build situation, the no build solution is the way to go. Let me say this, I'm going to tell you why I support that. You know, I feel that the trail system and the urban wilderness theme in South Knoxville is the future. It has branded us, and we can capitalize on it in many ways. This is attracting people to live in South Knoxville, to work, and to stay here, and that's what we need at this time. Because of the trails, there's an estimated $3 million already that's been invested in private real estate, just exclusively because of this trail system. I've also seen firsthand the devastating effect of diverting traffic away from our business of the long Chapman Highway with the current bridge closure. That is just, we can't have that happen anymore. I mean, it's just, it's devastating, our business is out there, and the burden of traffic again, it might be wise. There's been, as the mayor talks about, there's been thousands of dollars, private dollars that have been invested in this trail system, the urban wilderness brand, from the legacy parks, individuals, organizations, and what have you. And it would be a realness service to them for us to continue to ask for them to invest in our community, and that the money that they already have invested to be wasted and to go by the wayside, and that wouldn't be right. And lastly, I just want to say, I've never seen the devotion and dedication to a project as I have through the Atleti Mountain Bike Club. These folks are out every weekend, rain, shine, snow, whatever it is, who for sweat equity, the men and women of that club, to have built what we have as a regional attraction. There's very few places in this country that you can go and have what we have here. And we can't let that go by the wayside. And I thank them from the bottom of my heart because they're the ones that are behind And let me say this, as Mayor Harrow said, last Friday, we met with Commissioner Schor, and he is dedicated to one thing, and that's safety. And they've identified this evening that Chapman Highway is a problem. We've known that. But we're glad that they recognize that. It's time to put our money, our effort, our planning, and everything that we can into Chapman Highway to make it a better, more usable, user-friendly way just through South Knoxville and keep the businesses thriving there. If we divert it, they're not going to thrive it. So we can make it safe, it can be done, we can put a man on the moon, we can make Chapman Highway safe. Let's do that, and let those donations that we have out there, leave them as it is, and work on Chapman Highway and keep South Knoxville vibrant.
My name is Bill Cox. I've lived in South Knoxville for almost all of my 76 years, except when Mr. Rosen Harris sent me a letter and says, "Your friends and neighbors have selected you." Homewood Jethro called it "The Drafted Volunteer." I'd like to say that freedom is free, but the maintenance of it costs so much. Roads are not free. They require building, maintenance, and upgrades. We currently have three modes of land avenues being foot, bicycle, and motor vehicle traffic. No street, road, or highway, or limited control type interstate can accommodate all of these. The best of, the best road has no zero change in elevation, no speed bumps, no traffic circles, not 17 traffic lights from the Sevier County line to Knox County in the street bridge, no stop signs, no speed limits, or any other thing that interferes with the movement of traffic. The only thing better than this was Hitler's autobahn. The history of travel from Knoxville to Sevier was started with a path to the trail to a road to Old Sevier Pike. The Chapman Highway, Old Sevier Pike, was a wacky road that had gradual change in elevation so that horses could pull loads up the hill and not push them down the hill. Chapman Highway was upgraded to, from Old Sevier Pike. Some people oppose it because it took their land. My grandfather's son was cut in half from Lindy Road just south of Ford Valley Road to just south of Ford Valley Road. The two-lane highway was upgraded to four lanes with no curved lanes or sidewalks. The west side of Chapman Highway has about 150 feet of sidewalk from Henry Street Bridge to Long Avenue. The next sidewalk you see is when you drive into downtown Sevier. In the 1960s, Lady Bird Johnson's Highway Divification Program went into effect to install caravans and restrict advertising signs. Exchanges were made with no caravans across from the current Baker, Fort Dix, Old Kays Ice Creek, Walgreen, Pilea Oil, the Colonial Village, Ford Valley Road, South County Center. Almost none of this was on the east side of Chapman Highway, where it was possible sometime lanes were, or turn lanes were made. Chapman Highway cannot continue to accommodate the local traffic, a lot of the through-traffic to South Knoxville County and on. Upgrade to Chapman Highway will be trying to use it at the same time is impossible. It has been over 30 years since the James White Parkway was started. The first place was to start between downtown and Cherry Street, on Interstate 40, and go south to Dishes Parish. This was changed due to Pete Drew not wanting it to come through his neighborhood and Mayor Ash's waterfront. A group of citizens came up with the next best alternative, which was built, and could best be named the Pete Drew Victor Ash Gully. Without this, I can only imagine all the problems we would have had we not had this with the Henry Street Bridge being fixed. It is now time to finish the James White Parkway. Once this is built, we can encourage Chapman Highway and include local business and people's needs with bike lanes, traffic lanes, and sidewalks. Sidewalks need to be going in neighborhoods to walk without having to drive to the parts. Bill Brook Pike now has more feet of sidewalk than all of South Knoxville. James White Parkway can be made into a limited access control for these through traffic and bike lanes. It's time to take advantage of these with the dollars from the state and federal government. Without this, Chapman Highway in South Knoxville is going to be a standstill. Remember, sidewalks cost less in maintenance than parts and are used by more people.
Hi. My name is Mary English. I've lived in Knoxville for more than 30 years. I am here tonight representing the board of the League of Women Voters of Knoxville and Knox County. We have about 180 members. And I'm also, I'm the co-chair of the League's Land Use and Environment Committee. So I'm speaking here on behalf of both the League and its president, Jamie Dobbs. And I should add, full disclosure, that I was on the 2003 UT-15 project with UT, but my remarks tonight are made on behalf of the League. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to cut it short and leave the full version in the comment box. Just a little background, the League in 2008 adopted an official position after extensive study on land use in Knoxville and Knox County, and the position states in part that "We support programs and strategies which conserve natural areas and which promote infill development and investment in existing communities with their existing infrastructure." So, cut to the chase. The League supports the no build alternative identified in the EIS.
My name is Allen Hill. I live in Faragut. I'm the chairman of the Sierra Club here in Knoxville in 19 counties surrounding it. I want you to know that our Sierra Club organization has been opposed to this project since it first came up for me about six or seven years ago. We're opposed now, we favor the no build option, and we strongly favor the thoughts put forth by Mayor Harrow and Nick about improving Chapman Highway and preserving the businesses there. It's, obviously, anybody who's been in small towns around Tennessee or even in Knoxville, this is a bypass around this community center. And if you break that bypass there, that community center is going to die, and we don't want that. South Knoxville is a viable place, it's a wonderful place to live, and the urban wilderness that you have now, I think, is going to make all the difference in the world in how this community grows and what it sees as its future. So we recommend strongly to T-Dot to get the pencils out and the paper out, and go back to the dorm room, and do something for Chapman Highway. Bring it to the people, work it, get it satisfactory for the businesses and for traffic, for commuters, for walkers, for bikers, and let's get on the Chapman Highway and make it part of the town like it's been for the last 100 years. It needs to be that way, and not make a change. And I say, I thank that all of you over here who are opposed to the proposed connection ought to make your voices strongly heard to your legislators, your county commissioners, your city councilmen, and especially T-Dot. It's important that you get your written comments in for this January the 4th date, because that's going to, that's going to tell the story with regard to whether you win or lose. Be sure that you send those comments in and get your friends to do the same. Let's save Chapman Highway. We don't need to make it a derelict place. Don't build this thing. Build Chapman Highway better. Thank you a lot.
All right. I guess I'd like to start by thanking everybody for coming out tonight and showing their support for South Knoxville.
So what's your name?
I'm Richard Jindel. I apologize for making a guess. I'm Richard Jindel. I'm on one side of the channel, Chapman Highway. I've seen several faces out here tonight. I know our customers are mine. I appreciate each and everybody in South Knoxville, especially all the customers. My family appreciates you. To start with, I am opposed to this road entirely and very aggressively. Several people here tonight have already talked and talked and talked about the businesses in South Knoxville have gone under because of the bridge being closed. We all know this. As a parent, I'm not going to spend five minutes talking about it. My family needs this business. I want to thank all the vets, all the servicemen that are here tonight for all of our freedoms in this country. I had the choice. I could choose to purchase my property anywhere I chose to, open my business anywhere I chose to, and West Knoxville, you know, they have a lot of business out there, and they have a lot of traffic and a lot of community, but I chose to open mine in South Knoxville. South Knoxville community has treated me the best since I've started. South Knoxville people have taken care of my family. I have subsequently six other families that are South Knoxville families that depend on my business and my customers here in South Knoxville. I find it very offensive that you would dare to take a road, put it in, and bypass every business in South Knoxville just to justify that you think you're creating safer roadways. You want safer roadways, my suggestion is, open your eyes, look at what's around you. I'll quote Norton Road and Chapman Highway, for instance. Northbound traffic, cars moving 45, 50 miles an hour, with about 70 feet of room to see cars pulling out on the Chapman Highway from Norton. You want to do something, put a traffic light in there. You can account for any three accidents a week, that's 150 accidents a year from your assessment. That's Chapman Highway, 150, one traffic light. Fix that. You're not going to fix that, not with a road going around it. You're not stopping traffic from going up and down Chapman Highway, and you're not stopping traffic from crossing Norton Road without a merge signal. I will take the note to say that I have seen a survey team out there, but we're not here over whether or not we should be putting in a traffic light in Norton tonight. We're over here tonight discussing whether or not we should be bypassing Chapman Highway, destroying South Knox residents' homes, moving them, whether they've been there 50 years, five years, or in my case, I'm just moving into a South Knox home. Thank God it's not one of those homes. On the other note, last thing I guess I want to say is that I, my hearts go out and my prayers go out to all the families affected by this directly. Y'all have a good night.
Hi, I'm Molly Gilbert. I wear a couple different hats. I'm on the Dogwood Trails Association, I'm the chair of the Lake Forest Neighborhood Association, I work with a 16-county regional tourism group that works with the Department of Tourist Development closely, and I'm a resident in Lake Forest Neighborhood. I was curious to know how recent your research was on the traffic pattern, since this has been an ongoing project for over 30 years.
If I can get that number for you, I finished from the 2010 City Council Division.
Okay. Several people would argue that the last two years kind of negate that research, and at least it may be reevaluated. And many of the residents that I've reached out to through the Neighborhood Association are very strongly opposed, or were very strongly opposed when this issue was looked at maybe 10, 15 years ago. They're still against it, nothing has changed. And on top of that, now it would be even more of a detriment to South Knoxville because of the greenway system that would be ruined. We want you to reevaluate your research and redo it, especially in line with the Henry Street Bridge. And I'm in support of the no build option.
We did something unique. When we did, the first task force did its work, that was recognized by Governor Gretson and Commissioner Isley at that time, they did something unique. They, out of those 15 projects that they evaluated around the state and reevaluated, they said, "Due to the work that's been done in the community, we think it's appropriate to send this project back to the community for further review." We have a track record in this community of bringing people together. People don't necessarily agree on what they think the final outcome should be, but care enough and a passion enough to try to work towards the best decision. We've got a track record of doing that, and there's no reason we can't go forward from here and doing the same thing. I think we broke new ground here, and I think if we walk away from this and say, "Well, that's nice," but we don't do business like that now, I think we missed an opportunity. So my, my suggestion is, we, as a community, as local governments, and as our state government, T-Dot, say, "How can we build on what's been done to engage the stakeholders, to engage the people who are passionate and are willing to put their time and energy to see, to figure out what can be done and what are the alternatives? And are there things that we haven't even dreamed of yet? Even traffic and civil engineers can't figure it all out." Thank you.
I'm Janice Tager. I live at 326 Taylor Road. And if it's all right, I would like to defer my time to Dave Gorman. Is that all right?
Uh, sure. Thank you. My name is Dave Gorman. I live at 824 A.L.A. Drive in South Knoxville. I'm also a teacher here at Southwood Middle School. And, hey, I look at this map, and I know we're a targeted school here, but looking at where James White ends right now, it's pointing right at us. Despite that, we have some pretty remarkable things right here at Southwood Middle School that we're developing. You may have read about a grant that we recently won with the help and support of the South Woodlaw Neighborhood Association, a grant offered by the Dow Company of $30,000 to develop an outdoor classroom here on our campus. With the first little segment of the Parkway extension you're looking at, you're going to come right, right next to us on our campus here. I was walking on our campus through this area that we're developing just last week and saw that tail hawk that was right there, right here, as it is. And I'm teaching my kids about biology, and I've got Little Baker Creek that we're in and we're working with, that we're doing things, and we're snapping turtles and all kinds of things that are living right here. The impact on our 1,100 student population with this potential extension is, I think about the noise and what that might mean to us here and what we're trying to create with our environment. I think about this, the site of this construction and the sight of vehicles going past to us. And the kids I teach, a lot of them are going to be very directed impacted. I'm absolutely, speaking for myself, I'm absolutely, completely against this extension and can't stand a thought of what it's going to do to our educational environment right here, and I hope you'll consider that.
Good evening. I'm John Bo Sted. I live at 7317 West Ridge Drive out near West Town Mall. I'm so happy that our mayor, Madeline Rojero, stood up tonight to oppose this project. When Madeline was, when Madeline was campaigning, she was very clear about her commitment to green thinking. Guess what the people of Knoxville said? They voted her in overwhelmingly. That's what they thought about green thinking. That's, that's what they thought about green thinking. I am definitely against the build option for the Parkway. I wanna say the Parkway's destruction of the urban wilderness is not just a South Knoxville problem. I come here to speak for my neighbors from 10 zip codes, 10 zip codes. They told me to tell you not to build this Parkway. These people from all over the county ask you to take the bigger view. We, not just business as usual, not just the Department of Highways, the Department of Transportation in the 21st century, we want you to please listen to us and see what's going on in the world in the 21st century. I'm not sure I'm for the no-build option. If you say I have to choose between the build option and the no-build option, that feels like blackmail. So I wanna ask, I wanna ask the Tennessee Department of Transportation to really present analyses of options, not no-build, but build something else. Improve, improve Chapman Highway, think about alternative transportation, a park-and-ride shuttle, light rail that was proposed 10 years ago. There are alternatives all over the world. People travel, people travel to get from A to B by something else other than their car. Times have changed, times have changed in the 30 years that we've been talking about this. We now know that our planet is warmed by burning fossil fuel. I don't think we need more cars, do you? Our IM's Nature Center is our precious jewel here in Knoxville. And now, now we have our urban wilderness ready to become a green necklace. Let's not destroy it. Building highways does not solve anything. You build a highway, it fills up, and then you build another highway, and then it, and then it fills up, and then you build another one. You just called us that tonight. You say, somebody said, "Well, what good's it gonna do to take all that traffic off of Chapman Highway, it was supposed to be a big deal, and then don't look back under Chapman Highway, five halls down the road." And you said, "Oh, well, we're already, we're already thinking about building more highways." That's the point. Building highways doesn't get you anywhere. So let's have, let's have the Tennessee Department of Transportation be the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Let's preserve our, our urban wilderness, let's look at how people get from A to B all over the world, and let's not build this Parkway extension. Thank you.